Good evening. This is Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, meeting in the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks will be able to see you. And anything you intend to or not share will be recorded and captured. Uh, and saved forever and ever and ever. Uh, this is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members uh, of the board are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. The Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Thomas Andrew.
Here.
With the Coram of the Board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-two P M. Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of COVID-nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After their concluding remarks, I'll invite each board member by name to provide comments, questions, penetrating insights, and or motions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Board members, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. And for any response, please wait till you yield at the floor to state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. First order of business. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting?
I wasn't here, so.
So moved.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Uh, Tom Andrew.
I abstain because I wasn't here either.
Excellent. And Kyle McDonald.
I also abstain.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries, uh, three to two. Thank you. Any other housekeeping stuff, Mr. Jay, that we wanna?
Uh, no, so the, um, Central Street, Delson Roy, are gonna pass until the next meeting.
Okay.
And at the last minute, we got, um, PEG's, um, warrant article for the, um, drive-through.
Right, okay.
So that's what we should be talking about, I think. Anything else, any other votes, um, warrant articles?
And we, uh, we asked for an additional meeting on the thirtieth of September. It was a proposed meeting.
I think they got set up.
They did? Okay.
I think so.
So next Tuesday also?
Yes, and that will be with, that'll be with, um, the CMRC people. CMRC people. Right?
Um, let's talk about that.
Okay.
Um, Thomas and I met with them and Meredith last week. And we reviewed the, um, timetable for the language that would modify the overlay for Solomon Pond Mall. And Meredith had received from the proponents a reaction to Marlboro's use chart, which wanted to add some uses and make as many of those uses that are on that chart that are allowed, allowed by right rather than by special permit. And she said she would share that, so she shared it with, um, Ron and Jane and Thomas and I. And, um, she is not convinced that the Marlboro City Council will buy into the notion of no special permits. They may be willing to open the door a little bit further on some, but and then there were some uses on there that she didn't think, um, Marlboro would warm up to. So at that meeting, Jane and Thomas and Ron and Meredith, we agreed that for Berlin to try to modify the zoning at the special town meeting in November was a timetable that we couldn't meet. Because we wouldn't know what Marlboro wanted to do. And we'd be trying to foresee what they might change on their use chart and put it in on the sixth of October for the warrant. And we just said that it ain't gonna work. So today, Thomas and I and Jane and Meredith and Ron met with the proponents, um, two at the start and another gentleman joined. And, um, they asked about timetable and we said we, and you know, when we first talked to them a stretch ago, we thought about the possibility of being on the November warrant, but at this point, that didn't seem possible at all. And so we said, what's your schedule? Do you, do you wanna wait till May? Or do you wanna think about a special town meeting that you would help us pay for that we might do in like January or February, something like that? And, you know, it, it seems as though if we're able to get some sort of alignment between Marlboro and Berlin, um, before we sit down and rash and hash things out with the proponents, we'd probably be able to, you know, maybe we can get something put together by late November or something like that and then, um, begin to bring it to the public. December's a hard time to do that, probably more likely in January and, you know, maybe a town meeting in sometime in February or something like that. I, I think, is that fair, Tom? Thomas?
No, I think that, um, I think that is, and it's fair. And they actually seemed okay with that. One of the things that I indicated to them is, you know, we have drafting, we have coordination with Marlboro, we have review by council. Um, and then, and the most important part is socializing this in the community. And I said, we, uh, we really need six to eight weeks at a minimum to have this out there and have some meetings and get input. And they seemed okay with that.
Yeah, I, so I said to Ron this morning when we talked, I, I talked to him a little bit before our meeting, Thomas, and I said, I didn't think that they needed to meet with us next week. Um, that waiting till our meeting in October was probably fine. And this gives them a little more time to work through particularly the language for the, for the mall now that they've had this face-to-face with these guys. So we may not need a meeting next week unless there's something else.
Now, there are, there are a couple of other things I'd like to, uh, put out there to them sooner rather than later. Um, I know that we have the grant for purposes of generally rewriting the bylaw, and that might be available for support of modifications to the overlay in response to this particular proposal. Um, and we may want to speak to Special Zoning Council about this. And so, you know, I, we have done this in the past, and I don't think we're talking about, you know, big bucks here, but I do think one of the things we need to go back to them fairly shortly is maybe with an estimate of those kind of expenses and special town meeting and so on. Again, I don't think any, you know, any of those things are, um, unusual or that they, you know, wouldn't expect are trivial in terms of the funds involved in the whole project, but I, I wanted to put that in front of the board as well.
Yeah, I talked, um, I, I, we said to them that a special town meeting might be some, I mean, somewhere less than ten thousand, but that we threw that figure out so they understood that we might be after them for that expense if we were to do.
And I didn't see any twitching in the conference room on that, but my point is, I think we say, we talked about this, but there are these other things and it would be most, we, we don't have the facility for doing this on an ongoing basis. And so if you want this move vastly, fast and, uh, efficiently, we need a bit of support. And the fact that you've provided support is something that's favorable when this comes up on town meeting.
Right, right.
Um, the, so anyway, that's the, the mall part of the mall discussion anyway. I mean, that updates you about our thoughts about us town meeting anyway.
Yep.
Are these the people? There's one group of proponents that you were impressed with.
This is the one.
Okay.
They have, they are easy to chat with. Um, and, and well, they, they joked about how Meredith is really hammering them and they hope that we wouldn't, um, hammer them the same way.
And we, uh.
And we did, so.
Yeah, um, no, and they, you know, the thing that has impressed me about them is that, um, they have the vision to look at a mixed-use conversion of that so that you're diversifying your tax base, the sources of your tax base. Um, that really impressed me. And they seem to have had a good deal of experience in, in doing that. So, you know, we may see a whole conversion to, you know, various light industrial uses, and we won't go down the rabbit hole of, of defining that this evening because that's something, you know, we will deal with later on. Um, or we might end up with, and it seemed to me in these discussions, more likely, a mixture of, you know, recreation, retail, and uh, you know, light industrial research, et cetera, uses. So, you know, it, and, and it was that, that proposal with its breadth and, um, with its possibilities for diversifying our tax base that I think really sold me on these guys, and they have experience with doing it.
Yeah, there's, they, they plan to go forward and close in November on the mall.
Yeah.
Portion. And the, the deliberations with Sears are probably a little more serious because Sears, of course, is closed, but, um, Macy's, um, they're trying to have discussions with, and they're also talking with Penny's. So, but their plan is to buy even if they don't have those ingredients tied up.
So they, you know, to me, they're, they're serious. They clearly have the financing to do this under, uh, a situation where not everything is nailed down. Um, but I'm, I'm actually pretty optimistic about them as a counterparty as we go forward.
Yeah, the, they showed, um, some slides that projected, you know, how they might divide up what's there and, and all, and showed us some slides of projects again that they'd worked on in other parts of the country, particularly Ohio and the Midwest, but, um, it's certainly doable. And, uh, they, they continue to talk about the fact that there's a tremendous amount of electrical power on this site that allows them to capture some of the potential clients that other sites wouldn't be able to, um.
And, and the other thing is that, um, despite the fact that they're talking about radically changing the use. Uh, and I think about this from an impact to the environment, et cetera, that they're talking about using the bones and the structure of the existing building rather than just knocking things down, carting it away somewhere and building something new. And that, that was also for me a really important point.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, more green area, less parking, less traffic, less truck traffic, um. You know, it, higher paying jobs, fewer jobs potentially, but higher paying. You know, it's.
Yeah. And again, depending upon the mixture of alternate uses and retail, you know, they're which they were talking about the comparison, I think, at that point of converting it entirely to the alternate uses. But if they retain a mixed use, um, again, I think that, uh, that may maintain a degree of employment at various levels. So it did, the, the other one that we talked to was like, I don't know if I even wanna spend my time on dealing with this, but, um, these guys, these guys, uh, I thought had some good ideas and good approaches. And the fact that they'd done it in the Midwest, which has not been as economically successful as New England. Um, and, you know, taking these kind of properties that I think were sort of, uh, more critical in their condition than, um, Solomon Pond Mall, you know, gave me confidence as well. Yeah.
That's awesome.
I was at the mall yesterday, the day before, and I was thinking about the employee population density in that space. It's actually very low.
It is very low. If you've ever tried to check something out there, you certainly understand that.
Well, and, and during the day, if you go there during the day, there's just not a lot of customers. So even when there's only one employee per storefront, they're not very busy.
Yeah, and, um, yeah, so. Yeah, I think that's, uh, that's our report. The other thing I would say is that our sort of treaty with Marlboro about working together on this, uh, has been, I think, very effective. Wouldn't you agree, Tim?
Yeah, I find Meredith really easy to chat with, and she's respectful of our situation, um. So I, you know, I think this can work out.
What is, what is her name and position for the minutes?
Meredith Harris.
Are you spelled it?
M E R E.
E I T H.
I T H H A R R I S. She's Director of Marlboro's, what is it, Economic Development Corporation?
That's what I understood, Tim, yeah.
There's semi, I mean, it's. I don't, they must.
It's part of city government, but kinda not.
It's an agency of city government.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There are, yeah, they're paid for by the city. They're, you know, they're an agency. They're like the highway department. Except they deal with obviously other things.
The Economic Development Agency or Economic Development what?
Uh, maybe corporation.
I feel like that's right.
Yeah. I do.
And so anyway, you know, that, that all seems to be working. And I have to say that, uh, we did the first mall with minimal, um, communication between Marlboro and Berlin and it's, um, much more fun, and I'm sure it will be much more effective, which it has to be because we're in a more sophisticated position than it was, um, thirty years ago.
Yeah. Marlboro Economic Development Corporation.
Who else did you meet with?
So we met with three of the um, proponents.
You know what, Jay? I'll, I'll copy the, um, I'll copy the list of attendees on the team thing and, um, email that to you, okay?
Um, are we still on warrant article questions?
That's all we get tonight.
So, we also told Central Mass that we wanted to work on a, on the modification to the ADU bylaw that would be a result of the Attorney General's comments. And there have been no comments to, from the Attorney General yet about that zoning change in May. So I don't see how we can put that on the warrant for, uh, you know, the sixth of October, because we don't know what the Attorney General might have complained about. And.
No, and my, and my understanding is that, um, the Commonwealth understands that and understands the, uh, annual periodicity of towns. And so I think doing it in May is fine.
Yeah. So I also told that to Ron and um, I, so I said those two would be not on the table. We, we also said to them that we wanted, we might want some help with the, um, drive-through. And so PEG is here now and, and.
Well, before we get to that, let me ask a question on the, so if while the Attorney General is debating whether our ADU bylaw meets the muster, if something comes along, can we apply that to? We can. All right. So it's binding until they.
Well, that's a good question.
Or they might have been court.
I'm. I think we're gonna hear from the Attorney General in the next, James thought it would be, be before the end of the month, so probably in the next week or so.
I've been saying that, um, just the normal scheduling of a hearing or whatever would allow us to get out of the period before we would know what the Attorney General said. Even if somebody came in tomorrow.
Right.
Yeah.
But I just didn't know how open it leaves us to, um, you know, if there's nothing really binding, do you really have anything in place? Or can you apply what you put in place, what you voted for until the Attorney General says, no, you can't use that?
Yeah. My feeling is that we should proceed in accordance with what we have in place.
Okay.
Knowing that before we even have a hearing about it, if we schedule it, we'll have input from the Attorney General.
Got it. Okay.
I mean, you know, and then we could, obviously, if the Attorney General dings it, then we have to deal with that when it happens and figure out what we're gonna do. Yeah.
Right.
I'll ask the commission folks, because they, a number of towns got stuff back that said we have to fix this and fix that. So I'll ask what that meant in terms of anybody that came forward with a proposal. So I'll let you know what I learned.
Okay.
All right.
We're a little bit early.
Early four.
Uh, well, eight o'clock was when we said we were gonna take up the, uh, special town meeting articles.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we're, we're five minutes ahead. I mean, we certainly can have the discussion now. It's just, it was published for eight o'clock.
No, 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 I, I'm a great believer. If we said eight o'clock, there may be somebody who's interested in this issue. Is it only the, uh, the drive-through? Or are there others?
That's what, that's what will be discussed, yeah.
Okay.
The ones that are.
So there are no others that I might have missed because I was sort of on and off on vacation the last two and a half weeks.
Anything that we would have put on, Thomas, and we don't have anything right now.
Okay, okay. So it's just that.
Tim sent an email at some point very recently.
Yes, and I love that. And we should talk about that at eight o'clock.
Right.
Yeah, that, I, uh, yeah, because I, I put that together because of what may be some complications with PEGs, um, so we can talk about that at eight.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't know about that, but I liked your wording of it, um.
Well, I need to.
Eloise has her hand up.
Okay.
Let's see what Miss Eloise has to say.
On a totally unrelated something, in this afternoon, I put a, uh, document from Mark Rhodes for four house lots on Randall Road between Muse and Judy Clark's house. I realize it wasn't on the, the, uh, warrant, but when you're doing the, uh,
Okay, so that's down there and we need to pick it up and put it on our next agenda. Is that right?
And sign it.
That's the plan. We already.
We've signed it, yeah.
Yeah.
Already approved it and signed it.
Yeah, but you didn't sign before me.
Yeah, I don't even do.
I, I signed the form A. No one needs one signature, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's all set.
So did I, do I have the form A?
That's what I put in the mailbox of the Planning Board today, along with a check for four hundred and fifty before I lost it in my office.
I'll be right back.
You, he gave you a form A for that?
Correct.
Yeah, but I, I remember signing it. So I think it was with the package that you got, Tim, from Mark.
Yeah, all I know is I signed the plans.
Are you sure it wasn't Jenny's form A?
I don't think so. The check said black pearl.
No, I'm talking to, I'm talking to Jay about the.
Oh, sorry.
I don't think so, because I think I signed it on the hood of my car down the street from you.
Because.
Well, I need signed copies because that's what I have to give the assessors.
Okay.
Yep.
So they know this is valid.
Let me just.
It seems to me we know we've signed the plans, um, and we need to just confirm the four A, right?
And the good news is we've got the money.
Let's see, I have it right here.
There you go.
Hmm.
Yeah, but I'm not gonna put in the money until I know the rest of the paperwork is in.
No, 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 no. And it, again, uh, we know that we've signed the plans. It seems there's a little bit of doubt about whether and where the signed four A is. And yeah, we can address that.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
I have a copy here that's not signed by anybody, but I thought there was a paper when we signed. They'll find out.
Yeah, well, I mean, what we know is there's a copy that can be signed down at the Town Hall. And if we hmm, look at the package and there's a four A sign, then we're done.
Hmm.
Right?
Yeah, well, we'll have to see whoever's closest to the Town Hall can.
Okay.
No, if you, if you want another four A signed, I can go down to the Town Hall sometime tomorrow and sign it. That's not a problem. Do I need chopsticks to get stuff out of our box?
No, the key is right in there.
What was that?
You leave the key in it.
Key is right in there.
Okay, that's secure. And I'll leave my chopsticks at home. I can do that.
Thank you.
You have a PDF here, but it doesn't even have Mark's signature on it. So I think it's floating around somewhere.
Okay. And Tim, you, do you still have the, uh, plans that were signed?
No, Mark's got them.
Mark's got it. Okay. So it looks like there's only four A. It only requires one signature. I can do that. And, um,
You could put it in my mailbox when you're done, please.
Okay, perfect. And then, then you'll be good. And would you make a copy of that and put it back in our mailbox?
Of course.
Wonderful.
We'll send it and email it to me.
Can you do that?
Well, I can't, but James can.
Okay, then F. James. Yeah, you and me both. Yep, okay. All right. So I will, uh, I have to look at my schedule to tomorrow, but, uh, it'll probably be late afternoon. Uh, now I think about it, I'm in Boston tomorrow. So if I don't do it tomorrow afternoon, I'm gonna do it Thursday morning, okay? Are you good?
It's good.
All right.
Okay, we can move on to the next. We know, uh, it's a little bit after eight o'clock, so you can bring up that. So can we bring, Tim, do you have that language? Does anybody have that we can put on the screen?
Um, I haven't. If you want, let's see here.
So I just promoted PEG. Uh, Jay, do you know your videos off?
Well, I didn't want you watching what I was eating because it was so good. You'd all be really.
Totally fine. I just wanted. Totally fine. I just wanted to make sure that if you're sharing your screen, you, you know.
Hmm. Yep. Let me just do that.
Eloise, I'm going to put you back in the audience for now.
Are we looking at PEG's document or Tim's?
Tim.
Yep.
So, Tim, you threw this together and what was the purpose?
Well, PEG is here, right?
Yes.
Yep.
So as I read, as I read, I, I think the language that we got from PEG is, is what got signed as a citizen's petition.
Okay.
Um, and it talks about shopping center overlay district, highway shopping center overlay district. And, um, because of the shopping center overlay district, Solomon Pond Mall being in significant flux. I, I, I don't think we should be tampering with that language now. And that would leave the highway shopping center. And what I threw out was a simple change to the highway shopping center language that would allow drive-throughs at Highland Commons and pass on Solomon Pond Mall for the time being. So I, I wanted to engage PEG in a conversation about how she felt about that. It's a citizen's petition, which means it has to go to town meeting. It, it can't be pulled from the warrant because the citizens have signed it and, and asked that it be put on the warrant. And if there's enough signatures, which I believe there are, then it, it has to go to town meeting. But I'd argue we'd, we'd pass over it and explain that we want to go forward with an article that deals only with Highland Commons and the highway shopping center language and delays any action on Solomon Pond Mall because of the negotiations we're working on with proponents. And beginning to give them, um, changes sort of now rather than when we're negotiating with them, I don't think strengthens our position, you know? So that's my thought.
I disagree. I respectfully disagree. Um, this was something that every person that I talked to was in favor of, uh, to only have or to allow, you know, potential fast food type restaurants at both malls. They liked the, you know, easy on and off. They liked the traffic wasn't going to come through town. They liked, um, um, they pretty much told me that it was about time. So respectfully, I disagree. I'm not going to pull mine.
But you can't pull a PEG.
Right. But I, I don't, Tim, I don't think it's fair that, you know, I talked to people and they were like, yep, we need it in both places. And now you're coming forward to say, yeah, no, sorry. We only wanted to go up in Highland.
No, I didn't say that, Peg. I said, we're negotiating with proponents that want, that are in the process of buying and will close on the Solomon Pond Mall in November. We're planning on, and what we've proposed with them is to hold a special town meeting before the annual town meeting, at which time we'll make a series of modifications to create a new overlay. And I'd argue that that new overlay should include, um, drive-through restaurants. But to make that modification now to something that's dead in the water, in my mind, doesn't help in our negotiations with these new, new potential owners. That's.
Yeah, I, I guess I would, um, ultimately, um, differ with Tim on that. I think we have this in the bylaw. When we draft the overlay, we will draft it consistent with this bylaw. And, um, as people know, if the FBI was following me and knew about me, the first place I'd hide would be in a drive-in line because I never go there. Uh, but, um, I, I really do believe in both of those locations that, um, there's no impact to anybody and there's considerable benefit to the town um, with respect to taxes. And for those who patronize these, um, drive-in facilities, um, it gives them some convenience. So I'm, you know, I'm a great supporter of this as a bylaw modification. So I think, you know, I, I don't, I don't think it's, it personally, I don't think it's going to affect this. And I think that if, as we get into the overlay district, if we were to suggest that they couldn't have drive-throughs, that that would be actually a negative in the negotiation. So I'm comfortable with going with, um, what PEG has indicated.
So can we pull PEG's language up?
Yep.
Can you read it?
Hmm. I think you need to zoom in just a little more. There you go.
Hmm.
At least for my old lady eyes.
Hmm.
So Peg, walk us through what this says, because I'm not sure it says what you want it to say.
Well, what I wanted to say is to remove the current ban, um, which is, you know, in four forty-four, three and four fifty-four, two, the very last few words, but not shall include fast food restaurants and the other one, but not for food establishments. So all I did was to say is that I want to remove that language and amend it um, to say that, uh, if you, if you go up, um, Jay, so that I can see the revised.
Yep.
And all I, I took exactly what yours. So it's, nothing has changed except for the wording that you gave me, which is in bold.
Yep.
That's, that's all. Because where, you know, I had had Solomon and Highland, you're like, no, 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 no. Put it in there. So that's all it is. And that's how I've explained it to people, that I can't call it Solomon. I can't call it Highland. They are truly the two overlay districts and that's it.
No, I think I certainly understand that. And, um, the part I liked about Tim's characterization of this was that I thought it was more understandable to people on the town meeting floor as a motion. Um, but I am perfectly happy with adding Solomon Pond Mall to Tim's wording of it. If, you know, that, that was just my reaction, uh, Peg.
Uh huh. Thank you. I appreciate that.
In May.
So the way that this is written, you've precluded fast food restaurants.
The original precludes fast food restaurants. I'm proposing that we include them.
So.
The opportunity to include them.
So is this text what people signed?
Yes.
And so this is what would be on the one.
Right.
Because it, because it, doesn't it say, um, precludes fast food restaurants?
This is exactly why I like Tim's wording. Yeah. And, and please understand, I, I, I want this thing to pass to this, that reading this, we get down those rabbit holes. But if you look at Tim's wording and add the Solomon Pond Mall, you know, I know we can't say that in there, but of the Solomon Pond Mall, in addition to the Highland Commons, um, then I think it's a very understandable motion, which is exactly to the effect that Peg is looking for.
Yeah, then we, we'd eliminate all this reference to fourth.
Yeah, no, exactly. I mean, it took me 15 minutes to, uh,
Right.
to figure this out. And it's absolutely accurate. Don't get me wrong. It, um, but I think that there's a motion on the town meeting floor. So, you know, my, my own feeling is we have this, we're, this is what we, this is what goes on. But what I would suggest is that we make a motion along the lines of, you know, amend the motion, if you will, on the town meeting floor to make it more understandable to people immediately.
Well, or then the, the other option is to, to write an article ourselves, spun from the planning board and what.
And you would pass over this and we would make that motion.
Right.
Yeah. The, yes. Um, so therefore Peg, under that circumstance, we would have put a motion sponsored by the planning board that was basically Tim's motion with the other overlay added to it. And you could pass over this and, um, and then we could vote on, on the other motion.
But to me, that's an insult to the folks that have taken the time to, um, ask questions and sit with me and talk to me that it's, oh, look, planning board's going to do this. So hey, thank you for all your time and thank you for, um, you know, the time that you spent with me and the questions that you've asked. Yeah, I really don't need you.
Peg, you, you told us when you first came to talk about this.
I did.
That you were going to put an article on the warrant and you said that you would pull, pull it or pass over it if we put language on the warrant that accomplished the same thing.
I did, but Tim, at the same time too, you know, we're getting down to like the last minute. And I, to me, I've taken the time to reach out to you, to include you in on this and gather your feedback and help with the wording. And yet somewhat towards the last hour, it's, oh, here, we'll do it instead. I mean, I'm fine. I would be fine passing over this, but I would request that you give some acknowledgement to all those.
Oh, totally, totally, totally Peg. I think we would say that. This is the result of that citizen's petition. And the only reason that we're doing this is to, you know, make the language more immediately accessible to people. Totally agree. We could do that.
Right. If that's your agreement and, um, you're, you're going to include both malls. You're not going to exclude one over the other. I will get up and pass over this. But if you're just going to do Highland and exclude Solomon, that I'm not going to pull it.
No.
So we, um, we have to see amongst ourselves here in the next few minutes, whether that's something that we can accomplish.
Yep. So yes, I, I, I was speaking about, I was, I guess I might have used the royal B there, but, um, certainly I expressed what I feel about this. And I think others have to express theirs. You're absolutely right.
So Tim, do you? I, I absolutely understand your point about passing a bylaw on a property that is in negotiation. Um, especially where you have asked them specifically to hold off and not have anything related to their specific needs at this town meeting. It seems weird.
Oh. Um, I think the fact that this is really permissive and I think probably
Well, you're right. Yeah.
Almost assumed by them, um.
Right. But yeah, so yeah, if I could, um, but I do think that either this, the wording in this, or the one that you wrote, Tim, shows that we are willing to, um, modify the agreement that's there even without their input. Um,
But.
in a way, in a way that is beneficial to them.
Yeah. Yeah. But my point is, are they going to object to the fact that we include drive-throughs in our definition of restaurants that they may have on their property? It just.
No, and, and that's, that's my, but my point is, is that we said, you guys said to them, you and Tim said, no, no, we can't make any modifications to the agreement at this.
No, no, no. They, they won't, they won't even be aware of that. And it has absolutely no nega- negative impact on them. So, you know, I, I don't see that. That's.
I agree about the no negative impact. I just, um.
No, if anything, it would be to say, hey, we had, we had something on the special town meeting that clarifies that you can have drive-through restaurants. I mean, yeah, that's the way I deal with these guys on, on that.
So I'm willing to put language that would regional shopping center purpose, that would change four twenty. I was trying to is there a simple site in four twenty or are there multiple sites in four twenty that refer? There's probably just one, right?
I think so, but I haven't worked this, that through, um.
So if I'm willing to look at four twenty and include it in the language that I've just thrown out for four forty.
Yeah.
So we accomplish the same thing with just a simple snip here and an addition there.
Yep.
And then it's easy to explain at town meeting.
Yep. Um, I would, I would make a motion that, um, we proceed along those lines. And do we have enough time to approve this at the next meeting?
No.
Are we meeting next Tuesday?
Well, we, we, that's the question. Do we want, we, we don't necessarily need to for the folks at, at Central Mass, but we could certainly meet if we chose to. We talked earlier about perhaps the need not to meet.
Yeah. I mean, I hesitated draft during a, a meeting. You know, I, I wonder if we could, uh, effectively make a motion to create an article on the special town meeting and then, um, review it and vote on it next Tuesday. And then we can meet for 15 minutes, you know?
Yeah.
And you have to have a hearing?
You'd have to have a hearing in, um.
In any event, right?
Yes.
Before, before the town meeting though.
There has to be a, it has to be a hearing for.
Probably going to publish it, make sure that it guys enough time.
Yeah, well, no, the.
Of all of October and half of November.
Yeah. So you got, what is it? The seventeenth of November or whatever. So, um, you, you could hold the hearing in November and it would be posted by, you know, the fifteenth of October or something like that. It'd be fun.
Okay.
Okay. So I had made a motion that we, um, draft an article for town meeting consistent with the proposal that, uh, Tim had circulated. But adding the regional shopping mall overlay. I did, I'm not sure I have that exactly correct. Um, and present it next week for approval by the board.
Second. Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and on, I'll ask you to vote. This is to create language. That will be voted on on our next meeting. To include drive-through facilities at both. Highway and regional shopping center overlay districts.
It's fair, yep.
Okay, that's my understanding. I don't want to make sure everybody's clear.
Certainly mine, yep.
Okay, I'll ask you to vote. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Colin McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you for this, Peg.
Can you, um, can can this be circulated before our meeting so that we have a chance?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, Tim, do you want to, I mean, I think you're only gonna add like.
I'm gonna add another sentence.
Oh, you're gonna add another sentence. Um, I'm happy to look at it quickly if you like, uh, and then we can present it, uh. Uh, before the meeting, absolutely.
It's gonna rain tomorrow. I'm indoors, so I'll do it tomorrow and I'll send it to you.
Awesome. Awesome. I'm in Boston tomorrow, but, uh. I'm working from home, which supports me, uh, more time to do these things on Thursday, so I can, uh, look at it and we can. Circulate that on Thursday at the latest, okay?
I'll send it to you too, Peg.
No, I appreciate that. All right, and I'm sure we'll be in touch before town meeting.
I'm sure. And again, thank you.
My pleasure. Thanks for your time.
Okay.
All right.
Jay, do you wanna stop sharing?
Do we have other things on the agenda or is it the time for the?
Be it unless somebody has a timely item.
Um, I'll send around what Meredith sent to us. Um, in regard to the proponents, um, wish list. Regarding the use chart. So everybody's got a chance to look at that because I think when we. Um, if it's all right, I'll, I'll ask Jane and and Ron to come to our meeting in October.
Okay.
Um, and I'll negotiate with Jay about what time would be good, but. I th- they, I think, would like to get some input from us on how we react to. The new changes that the proponents proposing. And the whole notion of. You you know, like Meredith said today. The the question that the proponents asked was if. The, um, a new retailer wanted to come into a a space that was currently in retail. Would that be allowed by right? And the way I interpreted the overlay, that would be allowed by right. They could just come in. They don't have to come for to us for any special permit or anything. Whereas in Marlboro. Um, there there would be a special permit required. So in that case, Marlboro's stricter. Than than we are under current conditions for a use that's similar in nature that wants to come into the same space. Uh, so that was interesting and I thought, you know, we need to look at the chart. Because we really need to at some point marry it with, um, what Marlboro might come down with, so we can speak with one voice. The other question they asked was. Um, if a, if a structure, or let's say that a component part of the mall that was being leased. To a a tenant straddled the town line, would they need to get, um, potentially a special permit from both towns? And and, you know, Thomas and our response was that we interpreted it that they would. Um, and then they said, well, is there some way that we could, um. Maybe change the town line, so everything.
I said, yeah.
Yeah, right.
I said that. Eighteen twelve again, because that's when we were founded, um.
What's harder, two special permit meeting hearings or changing the town line?
No, I said to them at one point, um. That they're from the Midwest. I said, uh, welcome to New England where towns and cities are sovereign, you know, that, uh.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, Thomas pointed out that the impact on revenue might be, um, skewed if we change the town line and. And they said, well, maybe we could work out some sharing, you know.
We said that was a rabbit hole that, you know, we should not go down because it could take us years, uh, anyway.
They've been in the Midwest too long, so.
Yeah, indeed. More amusing moments, you know, that's.
That was one thought that I had when you said that they've done a lot of this in the Midwest. I'm like, mm, the Northeast is its own animal.
No, 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 I mean, I I think. And I think they appreciate it. I think we have, uh, in the initial stages, what we said is. You know, you've got one process in the city. You got quite a different process in the town, and I think that they. Uh, they're certainly gonna learn more about that as it goes along, but I think they appreciate at certainly. Eyes a moderate level, the fact that they're dealing with two processes here and they they have to just cope with that.
Right. Marlboro is Middlesex County, right?
Yeah.
Or, yeah, that's what I.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So, just like Hudson, you get two different, two different towns and, I mean, Highland Commons, two towns and two counties.
Two counties.
Yep. It's just what makes our job that much more interesting.
So we'll send around that use chart and you guys can poke around it and then, um, if it's all right, I'll tell Jane and Ron. We'll put him on the agenda for the first meeting in October.
This is the use chart that came from Marlboro, Tim.
Yeah, yeah.
What what I would say about that is what we said on the call today. Was you will see the chart and you will see a light Y to the extreme right. Uh, those were the uses that they initially said they'd like to have. In this area and we said two things. That we would review that, the whys in that extreme right-hand column. Um, to see if we thought that there were things that. Were deal stoppers or otherwise impediments to get this passed through town meeting. That was one. And two, on the extreme left, you will see the definitions. In Marlboro. Of the various uses. And I said that we also might want to. Adjust or make more specific or, yeah, or make more specific those definitions. So as you look at that, think about those, those, those two things, okay?
My move, we adjourn.
Oh, I'll second that, can I?
All right, there's a motion and a second to adjourn and it's non-discussable. So I will ask you to vote. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Colin McDonald.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye.